Oh, it'll be a good time. None of us have.
Yeah.
I was gonna check the temperature.
What is, oh. Right over there.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. With a moment of silence, please. Now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Joe, you want to lead us in the pledge, please?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Here.
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 Fire Chief Jimmy Suttle. Public Works Director Mike Sterrett. Chief of Police Mike Posey. Code Enforcement Officer Marty Lewis. Sanitary Board Director Dee Evans. Municipal Fees Clerk Kathy Sims. City Manager and Finance Managers Eric Joe Solberg here.
Okay. Visitors section, five-minute time lim- limit. You signed up, Ms. Mick?
Yes.
Would you like to come to the microphone? So everyone can hear you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Hi, Luanne Mick. Retired county employee. I live in Copley, West Virginia. And I'd like to talk to someone about this outrageous far fee. I'm not sure how many households are involved here out of county, out in the county. But I know that most people that live out in a rural area cannot afford this kind of money. You know, I, we could afford it on our retirement. However, my husband is, you know, on dialysis, heart problems, you know, we've, we've got medical bills. But I's, I'm sure our hardship is not as much as some of these other people. Working for the county. I have dispatched fire department. And when I got this bill, I wasn't sure why I'm getting it from the sanitation board. So I asked questions. And she's telling me that this money is going to pay these men to set up substations in the county. And I understand from years ago that the fire department in Weston charges out of county or out of state by car wrecks for their, with their insurance. And I know that the first man out is the first man out. Now, he could, he could be at my house in probably 20 minutes. 20 minutes is a long time when you have a fire. I've lived in the same residence for over 50 years. I've never called the fire department, never had a fire. And I know that the second truck is not, she tells me minutes out, it's not. Also, the substation closest to my residence, she's saying, is Goosepin, which is just the same mileage-wise from Weston to my house. Matter of fact, Priestown can be up and over the hill in my house before Weston can. And have before that way. Not to my house, but. And I don't think the city has the right to, to apply this to county residents without voting on this. What happened to the vote for everybody? And the other lady said, oh, we've had meetings over and over. Well, you may have had them, but you should have notified us that's going to be involved. So I told her, I'm not paying the fee. She's threatening me with court, canceling my homeowner's insurance. And I don't care. If we're going to court, we're going to Circuit Court. And if we're going to cancel my insurance, that's fine. That's another $200 a year I don't have to pay. So I have a call in to the governor's office to speak to him about this. Also, I have phone call in to Shelley Capito. So somebody's going to answer questions, why we didn't get to vote on this? Why and who decides this is the fee? You know, you see these fire trucks going out and to lunch, okay? That's city gas. That's a city employee then. You know, they're wasting money to start with. And I can see these guys putting their lives at risk. They do it every day. But not at the cost of everybody in the frigging county. I don't know who set up the first due area. When I started, I started at the county jail. We made the calls. And if someone wanted an ambulance, we didn't roll a fire department. And then all of a sudden, they decide that 911 is going to roll them all. Well, that's a waste of money when you don't need them. And the public will tell you, I don't need the fire department to this, you know? So I don't, I don't know what it's, what it's worth to you people. And but like I say, I'm, I'm not paying this bill. I'm not doing it. You go, they stand out in the streets for money? They just had a gun bash up at the lake? What kind of money did that cost? You know, it's costing you guys to pay them for this stuff that's not fire-related. So if you can pay them for what they want to be paid for, fine, but you're not getting it from me. I thank you for listening.
I'll try and answer some questions we heard and try to reply to some of those things. The, the first is the billing. The, the billing system that the city of Weston has been moving towards is what is the regional norm? So we've not been doing the regional norm or moving towards the regional norm. For example, if you live in Buchanan, all of your municipal service fees get billed to you from the Buchanan Utility Board. So those are your police fees, your sewer fees, your water fees, your trash fees, your fire fees, all come from the Buchanan Utility Board. We only have one utility, that's the sanitary system. So we call our utility board the sanitary board. But we're moving towards that same consolidated billing system. This is the norm all around us. I think Clarksburg is the only last city that still bills fire fees independently of any other thing that they're offering. Bridgeport, Buchanan, Elkins, all bill it on consolidated bills. We still bill insurance when, when we respond to accidents out on the interstate. That is still happening. The amount of money that we raise from that. Jimmy, is it, is it 14 or about 40,000 a year? Best year we had was $14,000 we raised from insurance. There are some insurance in, in particular, so different states regulate the way insurances pay out to fire service and manpower assist differently. In West Virginia, insurance companies are not required to pay out. So a lot of these insurance companies are acting on good faith. One of the largest insurance companies in the country doesn't pay out at all, doesn't pay. Zero dollars. The others that do pay will often look at the invoice and say, I'll pay less than this. I'll pay what I want to pay because they know that they can do that in West Virginia. That's state code. So best year we had, $14,000. Unfortunately, that's not really enough to do much of anything. I would like to remind everyone that when the council had their various meetings related to this, they could have passed it on an accelerated timeline of two weeks. I mean, any ordinance can be passed. You have a meeting and then you have another meeting two weeks later. The council chose to publish this for twice as long as it needed to be published in the local newspapers. We also published it in regional newspapers. And we actually took, I think, eight weeks to get from first reading to second reading to make sure that there was ample time for folks to be notified. One thing that I want to say personally, and this is, this is actually, if anything, sharing a frustration of mine with the fire department, is, is that I promise you they're not using city fuel to run personal errands because I can't get them to stop personally fueling the vehicles. It's a, it's a problem that I've lifted up to the fire chief in the past that, that I know that folks over there are fueling the vehicles with their personal cards because I know that when I don't receive fuel receipts, but I still see those vehicles operating, that somebody's fueling them. I want to point out that the Weston Fire Department does not stand in the street and do boot drives. They haven't in a very long time. Other fire departments in the county still do, and I know that that's true, but ours does not. And then the last thing I'll just add is that the gun bashes is operated by the volunteers in the volunteer fire department. And I think that's all I have to add. Does the city attorney want to add anything?
Alrighty, thank you for coming, Ms. Mick. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Be careful on your way home. Approval of minutes from the regular session, July 7th. Special session, July 24th. Special session, July 15th. Regular session, September 2nd. Special session, September 22nd.
I'm sorry, you still only have the September minutes in front of you? I'm still working and going back and recreating those.
You're working on which ones?
The, the July ones.
I thought I read all of them, but. I did.
Oh, you.
Oh, okay. Well, I read what you sent me. And it looked good.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm sorry. You still only have the September ones. I, I have to go back and watch the YouTube videos and and write minutes for those, and I still haven't been able to do it.
You never read those? It wasn't in there, Sherry?
No, they send me some, sometimes to proof minute.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah.
Well, I'll move to approve the minutes from September 2nd.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Receive and file reports of city boards and commissions and outside agencies reports. Weston Cemetery Board, next meeting Tuesday, October 21st at 4:00 PM at the municipal building. Historic Landmark Commission, Thursday, October 9th at 4:30. And that, instead of at the municipal building, they like to kind of move around to various historic buildings. So this time it's going to be at Sweet Espresso. Weston, Weston Planning Commission, next meeting is Wednesday, October 8th at 4:00 PM. Board of Parks and Recreation, Wednesday, October 10th. Lewis County EDA, next meeting is Wednesday, October 22nd, here in this room. Board of Zoning Appeals, next meeting Tuesday, October 14th. Code Appeals Board, Thursday, October 16th. Weston Tree Commission, Thursday, October 23rd. Weston Arts Council, next meeting is Tuesday, October 7th at West Hall. Land Reuse Agency, next meeting is Monday, October 24th at 5:00 PM at the municipal building. Municipal Appeals Board, no meeting scheduled. Weston Housing Authority, Jeff Petrie was reappointed to the board. Bob Taylor appointed to the board. Felina Henline aborted to the board. Bob Taylor resigned from the board. Dora Pratt was reappointed to the board, next meeting October 15th. At 4:30 at Chris Manor. Excuse me. Outside Agencies, Neighborhood Watch, October 8th at 6:00 PM at the Weston Fire Department. Lewis Gilmer Solid Waste Authority, Wednesday, October 15th at 6:30 at the Jane Lu Park Building. Known vacancies to be filled, Board of Zoning and Appeals, one position and one alternate. Lewis Gilmer Solid Waste Authority Representative from the city of Weston. Weston Housing Authority, one member. Sanitary Board Director Report, Dee.
Good evening.
Thanks for the removal, Brian. After what's seen, Mike, in the time we've finally got the impactful removal from state PPA. And through that stuff, that's finally been a thing. Other than the report that you have in front of you, I was mentioning a couple of things. We did have our EPA, BEB inspection of the plant this last month. That surprisingly well, they spent a day with us, spent a lap a day inside, round disabled. That's several things we found, and then we, they are plant and got a couple of pump stations and a couple of CSOs. And I think they summed it up well at the end of that inspection. When the EPA, if you look at us and simply said, we were pleasant. Does this inspection entail everything over the last few years? So I'm sure there was a lot of stuff in there that wasn't real positive in the beginnings, but what I saw in the last six months, it was perfectly surprised on what has taken place and what we've done here, bring up till the back of the life of, of a very decent job. The telemetry that we had installed at the plants, that we've seen endeavors, endeavors as a home line and seems to be working good. We've worked with Jimmy and the staff to fine tune some of the fire fees and the billing of that. And working on collections with the Weston San Perry Force. Got any other questions, though, about the report there? I'll give you a couple of numbers. As far as the accounting goes with sanitary going, also actually, this account for 198,862,76. And 2,254 of that was stormwater. And 1,424,32 were for two percent tax that goes to the city. And the fire fee was 16,514,59, which is about 1,500,000, I think, I felt like we lost. Do you have any other questions? I mean, I have to answer them. Otherwise, our meeting date has been changed from Monday, which normally would have been, and that's a holiday, Columbus Day, been changed to Tuesday at 4:00.
Joe, I need to go back just for a second. I'm sorry, did you?
No, go ahead. I'll.
The land reuse, I noticed, Monday, October 24th. Mon, it's either Monday, the 20th or the 27th. Which date is that? That's okay. Oh, okay. Land reuse. October 27th, Herb?
Uh, Dee, you ready for these questions? Could you reiterate, if you don't mind, one of the plans for the phase two of the sludge removal? What all is included in those plans? Okay.
We didn't, we didn't have your report. I've, I've been sitting here looking. I couldn't find it. No, it's okay. It's okay. No, it's okay. No, no, it's all right. I'm just saying we were, I was shuffling because I couldn't find it.
I want to write that down.
That's a. Thank you.
It was a good report. You wanted to send this one, huh? Okay, department reports. Joe, the finance is up next.
All right. Few basic updates I want to give you. First, we sent out over 600 BNO tax forms this past month for the end of the quarter, which just ended at the end of September. This was a new process for us to, this was our first quarter doing that without Judy present there to help us. I think everybody did a really great job working on that. Quick update on the finance manager position. The mayor appointed Councilwoman Rogers to sit in on interviews with me so that we could interview candidates. We did hold several initial interviews and I, I think unfortunately, I don't think any candidate presented themselves from that round of interviews. And so we're gonna continue interviewing. Couple of things I want to make you aware of. Kathy has, I, I would call it added a collection program, which, which would be estate claims. She's been placing claims against estates for municipal fees, which is not something we had done in the past. And so far, she's collected over $4,200 doing that. And then she's also ramped up the, what I would call pre-lean collections, which is when we know property is getting ready to transfer, but we don't yet have a lien on it. She's ramped up that program, and that has resulted in over $15,000 in additional collections. So I think we're really happy with that. Dee already mentioned that last month, we collected $16,000 in fire fees. That's a little bit up from the month prior when we collected around 14,000. We're still finding our stride with that program, though. We're still in the first couple of months of collections. And, and we've still got a lot of work to do there. I want to make you aware that this past month, I fell behind in getting in reports to this Consolidated Public Retirement Board. They alerted me of that last week, and by the end of the week, I had it caught back up. But I just wanted to let you know that that had happened and I did that. And then, related to the report you have, I don't have a vacant structures transfer for you tonight because there were no vacant structure fees paid this past month. This has kind of become normal where we've hit in our stride with the program because October is when we'll start billing again. We see that when we get to the end of each billing cycle, everybody who's going to pay has paid and folks who don't, don't. So there is no vacant structure transfer tonight. But I do have an expense detail report that I'll ask for your approval on. You give me just a moment, I'll tell you what page it's even on. Looks like it starts on page 80, or I'm sorry, 28th.
You're just looking for a motion to approve now? Okay, it's been moved by Stephen. Do I have a second?
Did everybody look at them or we just approved?
They're sent out to us.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have any questions about the finance report?
Okay, Street Department.
Where's that report?
Three pages. Here, you can have mine. It's right after the finance report.
I don't think you put it in my.
It's right before this. Yeah, it's three pages. You need mine, Herb? You need mine?
No, I'll find it if you put it in here. I gotta make sure.
It's in there. 36. You're looking at page 36.
Thank you, Sherry. I thought maybe Mike didn't put it in there.
Guys have been busy.
Mike, what's a tobacco tires?
What is a tobacco?
A tobacco.
I think it's a backhoe, isn't it? It's a backhoe. Police Department Report. Chief Posey?
Oh, good. That's wonderful.
Fire Department, Chief Suttle?
They have a gun bash Saturday. They have fire prevention all this week. Those we have about.
Are you coming to the high school? Well, I just wondered because that may be a good recruiting. I need to get you, we talked about that. We really need to get you up there.
He went to peas in a pod. They went to take care.
Get them, get them ready early.
Yeah. Recruiting.
Yeah.
Building code zoning? Man, they are really, this time of year, they are always thought what's going on. That are coming. I wondered. They're very active.
They're every day, seven days a week, they have a bird. Some days with nothing, other days with 10, 11, or something.
City Attorney Report. Yep, sorry. Yes.
That program, we signed up for a year for that. And I think that ends November, like early November. So we'll probably need to consider who wants to agree up. Who's supposed to get the, uh, update contract that I'll be having brought to?
Okay.
Marty, did we ever get the trash thing put out? The ordinance put out, because there's a lot of trash issues going on in town.
They go around and like knock on doors.
I know, we've, there, but there's been a I know trash cans are left out all week. Trash is piled up.
Same, same deal.
We could get that reminder put out. I really appreciate it.
City Attorney Report. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I have one question from Marty. As far as setting these traps for the vultures, do they, do they set them in certain areas? Or if we recommend an area, can they go to that area?
Not really. Well, probably. That, that trap is about 16 foot wide, about 20 feet long. And it's like several dog tunnels put together. And they have gas at the top. The birds, they threw dead beer and dead fish, whatever in there. The birds come to land on top, they hook them in that hole, then they can't fly out, but the wings are cute.
Yeah.
So to have that, Mike, is one of his favorite things, the way he's up in the morning to go out there and get a good lift with a clear beer. That's what attracts him. So you know what? Yeah, you don't want to just in neighborhood. It's, you know, we, that's the premium spot. You know, that's where they're gathering, getting like a secondary spot we talked about. It's like a B-ball property. We're not right on top of nature.
I was thinking that at the Masonic Temple there on Main Street, we put, spent over 90 grand on a new rubber roof, and those vultures got on it within two weeks and eight holes in it.
Yeah, for some reason, those black vultures, they like to pick it, rubber gaskets, rubber roofs.
Yeah.
The rubber, uh, weather stripping on your car. The, the turkeys, they're still, it's black after too.
Yeah.
And those really are hard.
I got you. Thank you.
I have a question. We had talked about before, relooking at that vacant building ordinance as a council. Some of the issues on that. Sometimes we, special session or something, can we have a discussion about that, please?
Sure.
Yeah, kind of like we did with Joey.
It's probably time, because it's been several years.
We want to have a work session for that, and then we'll have, maybe at the next regular session, we'll bring some amendments. Okay.
Okay, we ready to move on? City Attorney Report.
Issues, City Manager and I have been working on. I had to be here a long time going through all of them. But I've been working in, put it together and solved my problems and I'm being caught up. Happy to be here and see the assistance.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you haven't called any of us up yet.
Give him time.
Can you be at the LRA meeting as well? Can you be at the LRA meeting as well? The twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh at five P M. at the municipal building.
Because there's a lot of legal issues, but.
Yeah, we have a lot of.
And one of the things he's been doing is wrapping up all of those tax cell properties.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
Getting all that back in good order for us.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
City manager report?
All right, um, a few quick things I'll go through, um, court is happening on November fifth. You know, this, this has been something we've been working on Sam with to get back up and running. We have, uh, there, there is a meeting happening and I'll send you an email with all the details, but there is a meeting happening to discuss annexation. In the Stone Coal Community on October twelfth, that's this upcoming Sunday. I believe that is at five thirty P M. So look for me, email from me, I hope y'all can make it out there and, and have a good time talking with the residents there about the benefits of annexation. Slowly, we are trying to, um, make upgrades to city hall. Uh, I know y'all have had some choice words to say about the carpet in there, um, and the, the condition of the building, so we've been slowly trying to make those upgrades. Just in a, um, uh, in a, in a way that makes sense financially. This past month, we purchased, uh, two vehicles off the state, they were both around twenty-five hundred dollars, so it was something that we were, uh, able to do easily, um, and under my direction, and I think both of those turned out to be really great purchases. City mechanic has gone through it, one of them might have a, a, a two hundred dollar fix that needs, that's about it, so I think that was a, a good thing that happened this week. Two more cameras did go up the week before last, so the camera project is almost done. Um, I'll have a update on that later in the evening. But at this point, uh, we've got two more cameras to go up. And then one access point that's going up this week and that project will be done, so I anticipate that, until I ask you to expand the project later in the meeting. The project should be done by the end of this week. We have police testing going on the eighth, that's this Wednesday at five P M. at the municipal building. We're hoping we have a good turnout again, we had a fairly decent turnout at the last testing, uh, we just didn't have very many people pass. So we hope that we have a good turnout again, but we hope that more people pass this time.
Mike, I need to get you at the high school too.
Recruitment.
A few things about, um, the reach of our publications. The last several reels that we've put out on Facebook have received over one hundred thousand views. Um, and the followers on the city page are up over two hundred percent in the last month. So there's a lot of folks who are seeing the good things that we're pushing out there. Couple of things this last month you should know about, um, is that I, I went out with Dee, um, and the operator of the wastewater treatment plant and we took a look at both the plant at Stone Coal as well as the plant, plant out in Pricetown, um, and I think that we're developing a, a plan that we might be able to move forward with Stone Coal. That, uh, leverages the grant money that the city's, um, anticipating getting and the sanitary board is anticipating getting. Um, and it leverages those things in the most cost-effective way. So that the, uh, the rate payers see the most value there. I think we, we learned a lot this past month when we went out with the operator and looked at the plant at Stone Coal. Um, and I think that conversation just continues to go really well with that community. I think those are all the particular updates I'll have, but I'll give you a few more updates, um, throughout the agenda about cameras and fencing projects and the riverfront project. Does anybody else, any questions?
I do, how are we going, how are we doing with the cross-training?
It's going well, I think, um, we've, so there's still a lot more cross-training that needs to happen. We've done cross-training downstairs where now, um, Joyce, who is our temporary fill-in admin assistant, can effectively take, um, payments for either side. Debbie with the sanitary board, um, has been effective in managing, uh, phone calls and, and, and answering questions related to city services. And Kathy's been able to help a little bit on the sanitary board side too. So it's going well, uh, but it's not going as well as I hope it would, as I hoped it would, just because the number of people were missing. With, you know, not having a finance manager and then, um, the city clerk's been out for a little while. That makes it a little challenging downstairs, um, and upstairs, I mean, everybody is pressed, um, to the wall to, to get their own work done, so. Cross-training's, we've not been as productive as I hope, but we do have that, that first hurdle jumped, uh, which is downstairs, being able to take collections on both sides.
I have a question.
Sure.
The position that Laura's working in, since we are getting winter time, would it not be advantageous to also train her for downstairs as well?
Yeah, so, and she's been getting cross-trained in a lot of the city clerk stuff because she's been picking a lot of that up, so she's been managing, the agendas and the minutes and things for all the boards, committees and commissions, um, and she's been handling the city calendar and then she's been handling most of the, um, event, uh, and parade applications. And so she's, she's really been getting cross-trained in some of the city clerk stuff. Not because that's where I think she's best used for cross-training, but because it's where I have the most need for.
That's what I'm saying, we need to utilize all people we can at this point.
Yeah, and that's what we're, we're doing.
Because I'm really getting slack over, administration hiring at my board.
Okay, well, well, we, I, I mean, I think we need a, we need a finance manager.
It's not finance or, or attorney, it's the assistance of everything.
Okay.
I do get a lot of.
We, uh, so, so she is being cross-trained as well. She has not been cross-trained in the payments yet. But it's just because that's not where I've needed the most support.
It's getting cold, flu season, and who knows, we might have two or three people out, because I know kids are already out with the crud.
Yeah.
So I just think all hands we have is advantageous to everything over there.
Yeah, no, I agree, I mean, this, this has been the, the goal has been to get everybody cross-trained in everything. Like I said, it's just right now, we're, we need a finance manager and you don't, and I, I will say that I didn't know how much the city clerk did until she was gone. So it's, it's been all hands on deck just to keep up with those things.
Okay, I have another, uh, word three part, how's that coming?
We're, we're working on it, believe it or not, um, so I think.
That's my goal.
Yeah, no, I, uh, it's, uh, so this is actually something that I was just in conversation, uh, with Laura about. I think at this point, our plan forward on that is to identify, a property that we have a large lean against that may be, uh, suitable for a small park. So this would be like a property where we've, uh, demoed.
Trade-off.
Yeah, yeah, basically, we're, I think that's, that's how we're gonna get there is we're gonna, um, find somebody who's got a twenty thousand dollars.
They were eyeing, her and Nate were eyeing a couple of places down there they thought would.
Yeah, and so, and we've had a couple of conversations with people, um, and we can't force anybody to do anything, we can just try to make a, um, a good opportunity for them. But there's, we've formed out a few more houses since then, so we've got a few more opportunities. Um, and I think that continues to still be our best bet, so we're still looking at that.
Same pairs.
Yeah.
I also appreciate the, the lighting at the intersections, those, those brighter lights are so much more safer, at those intersections, especially out West Second Street, because when those people walk at dark at night, you can't see them, because they have that dark clothing on.
I've had, I've had complaints in my ward about those bright lights going in residential areas. Well, that's not working, that's, that's not working in the residential areas though, and initially, initially, that wasn't supposed to happen. Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
But like the one that's right across from our office, that's, that's the higher one, and I asked her, I think I was coming along there, I asked her that right over there, it'll light up.
Yeah, because the, the parking lot's really dark when you come out at night.
But residential areas are supposed to be the.
Right.
I just know the ones at the intersections are very nice.
I, I will throw a wrench in it, but Kathy will vouch for me, um, that, so when, when we put out that, that new, chart from On Power to Follow and we said, when you replace ones in intersections, they'll be brighter, when you replace ones in residential areas, they'll be dimmer. The chief complaint I think we actually get at the municipal building is people who've had their residential light replaced with a dimmer light, and they're complaining that they no longer feel as safe as they used to. So, I mean, we're, we're getting them all over the board.
Yeah, the, the one that they put in where I used to be like, I will need seventh, or these seven, it's the higher. Just like in the intersections, you may want to check it out.
The ones at the intersections are nice, I mean, the main intersection, Main Street. They were so dark, people walking at night, you could hardly see them.
Yeah, it's a bright one.
Yeah, I'm not out after dark.
You need to start going out.
Huh?
You need to start going.
I know, I know. There you go.
Sorry, this question.
Yeah.
I didn't read my post-it note, I can't read my writing, I'm sorry, I think this was, um, should have been under finance, I apologize if I'm going backwards on that. How are budgets for departments?
They, well, everyone is doing fine keeping in their budget, I am not doing fine getting them their budgets. And, and that, that just goes back to, we need a finance manager, we need a city clerk. I, I try to stay, the, the department heads are really good about communicating with me when they feel that they have a need, hey, is this in my budget? And I can do a quick call as to whether or not it is. Where we had reached and where we want to get back to is that they were receiving, um, monthly breakdowns of their budget so that they could make that call themselves without having to reach out to me. And I have fallen completely off of that wagon, um, because that does take, in order for that to happen, everything's got to be reconciled and done very early on in the month. Um, and it's just not been something that I've been able to get done early in each month.
I'm just concerned about the streets with how much money we can spend on paving.
Yeah, now, so the, the, the paving budget is one I watch closely, don't worry.
Well, I've been in, I've been in that environment where department heads do not have the budget and that is a hard way to work.
It is a hard way to work, yeah, and I mean, I'm not.
It's a hard way to work and they, it's as easy as a spreadsheet and you giving them a balance each month. And them taking care of reconciling and, and, and keeping an eye, I mean, they're grown adults. They gotta know what they have and it's as simple as an Excel spreadsheet and a balance from you at the beginning of every month and then keeping track of, of where they're at.
Yeah. The, the challenge in our system is, is, uh, particularly with payroll, payroll requires individual journal entries for every department. And then, uh, and then there's a reconciliation depart, uh, that has to happen for, that catches any E F Ts or electronic payments and stuff. Those things, I mean, they only take, everything I just described probably takes four hours tops to get done at the beginning of the month. It's just been something that I've been really pressed to do.
And who does our payroll?
Me, well, A D P, um, A D P, we, we use an outside payroll processor, which is A D P, automatic data processing. And they're supposed to have the capacity to, you know, make it importable to our charter of accounts immediately. And we've sent them the charter of accounts again and again, and they've never been able to make that work. So it just requires a manual entry. Yeah, no, we've had, and, and so this is, this is just another point of discussion, we've talked about changing payroll providers. And, you know, most recently, um, the pensioners have been the most vocal about, are you going to change payroll providers? Because we had probably three months in a row where direct deposits were really sporadic and I would have one pensioner get their direct deposit at the end of the month, and one pensioner not get their direct deposit until the fourth of the next month. Um, and it was getting really, uh, volatile situation for them. I can only say that I'm glad it didn't happen on the city employee payroll side, because I'd have probably been hung from my toenails, if city employees weren't getting their direct deposits on time. But, so I think changing payroll providers is something that we know needs to happen. There's just a big administrative lift related to that, that again, it's like we need to have a finance manager.
You know, if we're, if we're working a month prior on balances, because if it's A D P or whoever it is, as far as taxes and everything else included, they know ahead of time before payroll. So we're working a, a month prior behind on balances, including payroll and all, to get a balance for each department head for each department.
Well, bank payments come out on the first of the month.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's the first of the month, so when, when I was just finance manager and I was right on top of it, first of the month, bank statement comes out, I'd have it reconciled by the second or the third, usually the first department head meeting, um, in the month, I was able to get them a report.
So if you picked a date between the fifth and the tenth of every month, to go from that date to that time the next month, then you would always be ahead as far as them having a budget to work off of. Instead of trying to do it at the first, when you're at the beginning where you're getting all your numbers in. If you would go five to ten days ahead of time and work from that point and make that your, your monthly, uh, date from say the fifth or the tenth of the next month, when you have all your numbers in, to where you could send to them and them have their budgets and work off a spreadsheet that, or some way to keep track of what they're spending and then turn it in or sending in to you every month. It doesn't have to be the first of the month.
Yeah. No, I, I, I hear what you're saying and it's, it's, it's well understood and it's well took, I, I, I wish I could say that I was even having things reconciled by the tenth of the month, is what I'll say, I mean, there, there was a point this summer when I was three months behind on reconciliations.
Yeah. So we need to fix that quickly.
Yeah.
Just so you guys are aware, because it takes all departments to run the city. And everybody needs a budget to work off of, so you guys really need to work on that.
If you know anybody looking for a job and they've got a bookkeeping background.
And that's nothing against you, Joe.
Yeah.
It's a huge issue, it's, it's what runs the city.
All, all of, all, and I'm just gonna be candid with you guys, all of the tensions in, in the municipal building right now, and there are tensions, whether, you know, you always fear about them or not, almost all of the tensions in the municipal building right now are rooted in, uh, folks being stretched too thin. And just not being able to get the things done and not being able to support each other, uh, in the ways that we set out to. Not to, not to get too far into the nitty-gritty, but, um, you know, when we did the merger with the sanitary board, the finance manager was going to support the sanitary board in a way that he's not been able to. Um, and then that's caused the sanitary board to have to support the fire fees in a way that they weren't expected to. Um, and then that's caused the, um, chief of the, uh, fire department to be stressed about the way that that's being done and not being done. You know, there's, there, there's just a long line of, yeah, it's, it, there's a long line of challenges and, and domino effects when you're, it's, it, it was, and then, you know, the, the situation with the city attorney, Sam has been wonderful. But like, for example, we've had, uh, three FOIA requests in the past four weeks. So when we, when we had an in-house staff attorney, you know, going and pulling those invoices and things was something they would do, it's not something that I can chuck over to Sam at this point, because he's just gonna say, well, go to the files and pull those invoices and do these things and gather these things. And so, losing a city attorney, the city clerk being out, not having a finance manager all at one time, these are, these are all just creating administrative stressors. And my view is that everyone is doing a really wonderful job in supporting me and I'm really grateful for everyone, because there is not a thing that I ask for help with that I don't get help with. But there are some things that I either just need to, train somebody and I don't have the time to train somebody, or it's, it's just otherwise, you know, needs to get done and it's not getting done. So, uh, I try to be candid about that, I know that there are a lot of things that need to be working a lot more smoothly. We just lost too many administrators at one time. Chief administrators too, not, not assistants, not, I mean, at one point, we had a city manager, a city clerk, a city finance manager and a city attorney, all in the building, now you've got me in the building. So it's just, um, I try to be open and candid about, that's why I told you about CPRB, I mean, that, that is a really basic, basic function of the finance manager, is to submit those retirement reports, and I felt delinquent on it last month. I did get it caught up, but this is where I'm at on deadlines, is that I'm, I'm pressed on every single deadline I'm hitting now, I'm no longer, I'm, I'm not fifteen days ahead on anything at this point, I'm getting things in fifteen minutes before the deadline.
Well, we appreciate all you're doing, Joe, you, you filled in and have done a lot, but the issue is, is when we had all these administrators, it was still an issue at that point. They didn't have budgets then to go off of as far as running.
I think I was giving out budgets.
What's that?
I think I was giving out budgets pretty regularly when I was, before, before January. I think I was giving out budgets every single month. I mean, I, I let the department head speak up against that, but I think prior to January, I was, I was Johnny on the spot with that stuff. And it's not. It's, it's not an unreasonable expectation that the finance manager would be. It's just.
We have a consideration of, uh, executive session at the end. Do you want to talk about this then?
No, I'm, I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, old business. Discussion and consideration of action regarding Councilman Curtis's ward for impending resignation and resulting in a vacancy. Um.
I will recommend that you move this item below item K in new business.
Okay.
Amen.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, aye.
Motion carries. Alrighty then, um, consideration of paving schedule and award of paving bid.
Alright, so the, the paving bids are there on pages 70 and 71. Um, I sent you out an email about this prior.
Right.
Um, I believe the Public Works Director and I are recommending that you authorize. JF Allen, that you award the bid to JF Allen.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Is there a cost in there? We're, I'm just a final call.
Yeah, sorry, let's see. That is, it's on page 70 is the one we're asking you to authorize. Um, and Mike's got some supplementary information that he would share with you there.
JF Allen's is a hundred and forty-nine dollars, um, the same as they were last year and the year before. We had the other company came in with one, one, four, thirty-five. That's considerably luck. And. The difference in the, I need to pay right now is about twelve thousand dollars. But. I went and talked to.
Bless you.
Sorry.
I went, they, I asked them, just like I've done with the weakness of the paving contracts we typically had. Which I think you all remember about a few years ago or whatever. Uh, so I went and I talked with, uh, the paving contractor on this, uh, bid, but. And I asked if there was any streets or anything that they'd done. If you all want to look at them, there's pictures right here. I went and looked at them. Uh, this contractor done some work for, uh. Uh, and more, and they done two streets and they had to come back and redo them. That were all the two streets and you can, you're welcome to look at these pictures if you want to. I feel that what I see right here, uh, when we do milling cuts, you know, you're very much aware of milling cuts. With your husband working in what he does. Um. If you want to look at these. You want to look at these?
Yeah. I'll refer to you.
Well, the captain showed them to you. You guys, there's no milling cuts whatsoever. And any driveways whatsoever. And they put some curvings on. And it was supposed to be curvings on the edge. They did not do curvings and then they come back and redone them and sorry Steve, I'll give them to you, man.
Okay.
Uh, they, they brought them back and they put them in here with, uh, cold fact.
Oh.
So. We're looking at the difference, uh, what did I say, Jimmy, twelve thousand?
Yeah.
What's the difference, twelve thousand, eight hundred and some dollars?
Mm-hmm.
But except for you guys.
Yeah. That's not good.
I.
It's just the same thing.
You're trying, you know what I see?
Yeah.
And I talked with Joe and I would rather, uh. I know it's more money, but I, I think we need to follow this. Paving, I might recommend that we go with JF Allen.
Alrighty, do we have a motion?
I'm moved to go with J, JF Allen for one forty-nine. A ton, estimated twelve thousand ton, one, twelve hundred tons, sorry.
I made it up.
You're really paving. Twelve thousand.
And you're nine ninety-five per ton and milling four sixty-five.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay.
We are drawing. Pickout Street, I've already done it, but you know what's going on in the ward, Arnold Street, Bennett Street, Paul Street. And. Uh, Stephen, that Paul Street is down where you're asking, they're, uh. And out of down by the. That comes off of Oak and goes down Cemetery. Down next to the Brooks's, Burnside, Banister, Sixth Street, Alley, and that's ready to cross the front line. Old Ted Garrett's, uh, school bridge down there, they even have by Bob's Auto and then Carbon Street, Carbon Street will open. The thirty, that thirty-three out there, thirty-three just around the middle city limits.
Yep.
That's what all we do.
Did we not have Oak on that list?
What's that?
Do we not have Oak?
I thought he said Oak.
You said Oak?
We don't have Oak on there yet. Uh, Oak will, needs a little bit of work. And the reason why I didn't do that, because it needs two drains put in there that's coming off of upper oak.
Mm-hmm.
Which you know that we have concerns with that water running over. There's some work that needs to be done on that street and we don't have the time to do that right. Uh, when they bring us back up, we have the time to do it, but to get paving done wouldn't be for us. So that will probably, that street may come down our spring.
Oh crap, I had a question and just left my head.
You're, you're cut off, you.
Yeah.
Nah.
Yeah, it was, oh, it was, it was important. Over there on Sixth and, and Street with that drainage issue. Did we ever get that fixed over there?
I'm waiting on, uh, Mr. Doug.
He has not contacted you yet?
He has contacted me, but I'm waiting on him to tell me what size pipe and he said that he would supply the pipe, but I have not heard anything back.
It's been a while, right?
It's been quite some time.
Are we ready to move on?
That was one of the things, uh, Ms. Herkert's talking about to you.
Consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh six supplementing the City of Weston Business and Occupation Tax Ordinance and Business License Regulations to provide for additional enforcement, collection, and due process measures.
Um, so this starts on page seventy-two of your packet. Um, I made one tiny little change since I sent you out the original version of the packet last week. Um, which was just, it mentioned the city jail and that was a copy and paste from other ordinance. Um, so I changed it to say city jail. Um, or other jail being used by a city, um, since we don't actually have a city jail. Um, but otherwise, this, this ordinance is something that we've been talking about for a while. Um, it creates a roadmap for us to be able to increase enforcement, um, of the BNO tax ordinance. Um, and then also enforce, um, business licenses. Um, under the current code, we can revoke business licenses for non-payment of BNO taxes. Um, but the code leaves us very little. Uh, our current ordinances leave us very little room to do anything about someone operating without a business license. Um. And so this, uh, creates a roadmap for that. Um, which is basically fines, uh, until. Eventually jailing if necessary, um, for continued operation. Um. Do you have any questions about it?
Is council ready to make a decision on, um, the consideration of this ordinance twenty twenty-five oh six by title only? If you would like to move forward, I'll need a motion for the first reading.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm just looking for incentives.
What?
Well, they, when I start creating incentives, do, because. This is, I just, I'm going to go ahead.
Ready?
Yeah.
I need a motion from someone.
I'll look through for the first reading of the city ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh six by title only.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Go ahead, Debbie.
I was letting you do all of them.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I was letting you do all of them.
Go ahead.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. First reading.
Okay, we'll have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh six by title only. Supplementing the City of Weston Business and Occupation Tax Ordinance and Business License Regulations to provide for additional enforcement, collection, and due process measures.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh six by title only? We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
We have a second. Um, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda. Consideration of appointment of city representative to the Solid Waste Authority.
So Solid Waste Authority reached out this month and said, hey, Nate Stansbury was your, uh, representative on our board. Who's going to replace him? Uh, so I'm recommending that you appoint me to be his replacement on the Solid Waste Authority Board.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, consideration of general fund budget amendment two.
Yep, so this is on page seventy-six. Um, this relates to two other things that are coming up later on the agenda. Um, but it also relates to something that I think Herb just mentioned. So I, it's important that I, I want you to understand what's happening here. Um, so what you see there is that there is an increase to projected BNO tax, uh, BNO tax revenues. Um, and then that pays for an increase to the police department and an increase to the public works department. Um, so first, let's talk about the BNO tax revenues. Um, we had previously approved just under five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for BNO tax revenues. That was after we had collected seven hundred and twenty thousand in the year. So we were projecting, um, uh, to collect. Um, like a hundred and seventy thousand dollars less than what we had actually collected previously. And that was to leave us some, some breathing room to start looking at, uh, BNO tax, uh, revenue reductions. Um, or some kind of, uh, rebates or, or something else related to the BNO tax program. I think two, two things have sort of changed since we had that conversation, um, back in March. One is, as I've dug more and more into the BNO tax code, I'm sorry, the B, the actual BNO tax program of companies paying it. Uh, it is, it is not at this point. I- in a state of level enforcement. Um, it is, it is in very much a state of unlevel enforcement. Um, and has been for a couple of years. Uh, so. One, I think there's a reality that, um, any reduction, any fee that you, or, or any rebate that you might give. Tastes a lot less sweet if you know that your competitor just simply isn't paying it. Um, and we have some cases of that going on where you have good actors and you have bad actors. Um, and I think that we need to, to deal with the bad actors before, uh, we start. Giving rebates and reductions. Uh, but then the other thing that's changed since then, um, and I'll talk a little bit more about this in the next point. Um, but at the last special session, um, the police pay schedule was brought up. Um, it was something that we increased about eighteen months ago. Um, but since then, surrounding communities have increased theirs as well. We're still competitive with Elkins, um, but they're looking at increasing theirs, in which case we wouldn't be. We're not competitive with basically any other entity surrounding us. Um, so looking at the need to protect public safety. Uh, and looking at the need to, uh, have more level enforcement of the BNO tax program. Um, I'm recommending that we reduce. What we had allocated for rebates and incentives in the BNO tax program. Um, and that's where we're paying for, uh, the increase to the police department and the public works department.
So this is included in the, um, consideration of budget, general fund budget amendment two, correct?
Yeah, so there, there's still two things that are coming, going to come after that. So after you put the money in those departments for them to spend. Um, I'm going to make a recommendation about a police pay schedule and then I'm going to make a recommendation related to the public works department. Um, and you'll see that there's a little bit, uh, there's a little bit more money than what each of those things costs. Um, so. On its, on its face, the increase to the police pay schedule looks like it should only cost thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, but that's if every new police officer you hired were fresh out of the academy. Or were fresh out of, uh, or hadn't even gone to the academy yet. So in order to have some room there, some breathing room to be able to hire some tenured officers. Um, I think there needs to be a little bit of, of additional cushion there. Um, and then we've got a thing coming up about the street sweeper tonight. Um, normally I wouldn't prioritize, uh. The street sweeper necessarily a say over above BNO tax, uh. Um, reductions. But I think what, w- we really do have a case of unlevel enforcement that I think is going to take. I think it's going to take at least six months of working on that, um, before we're even in a place to discuss the other thing. Um, so those are the next two things on the agenda after this.
Okay. So. It's council's wishes on. The, uh, general fund budget amendment two. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go ahead.
I will do with the, uh. General Fund, Public Department number two.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of the new pay schedule.
Okay, so, and I apologize, when I threw the old pay schedule into the packet, I didn't realize all these other things came over with it. So there's a bunch of papers in there that you don't need. Um, but the old pay schedule is on page eighty-three and the proposed pay schedule is on page eighty-seven. Um. So on page eighty-three, you see the, um, pay schedule there that was passed by council back on February fifth, twenty twenty-four. Um, so that's the pay schedule that we're currently operating off of. Um. I think it's. Almost eighteen months ago to the day, um, that you passed that. Uh, and at that time, that was a. Pretty competitive in the area. Um, and then like I said, since then, it's, it's gotten less competitive. Um, and sort of where this conversation has gone, two months ago, I, I brought it to your attention that Elkins was. Um, entertaining a raise and that that, uh, would make them, uh, compet- more competitive in the City of Weston. Right now, they're less competitive. Um, and that, that might result in losing officers. Um, at that time, I think the council didn't want to, uh, entertain a raise. Um, but then last month at the special session, um, councilwoman got, got, brought up the importance of public safety. Um, and just the fact that, uh, we're behind almost every other department in the area now. Um, so here on page eighty-seven, um, I've got a proposed change and there's, there's three. Major things happening there. The first is, when you look back at the, the old police schedule, you'll see that, uh, post-academy, it was set to forty thousand. And then when they hit their one-year anniversary, it jumps up to forty-four, five. So there was a big jump when you hit your one-year anniversary. Um, and that was supposed to just try to be an incentive to keep folks on board. There was a light, you were going to reach it. Um, I still think that's a, that's a decent philosophy.
Let's see.
But it's one that's not working for us. And I think when, when something's not working, even if you think it should, you should probably try something different. So the first change is, notice that post-academy, um. They immediately get, get bopped up to basically what starts the pay scale. They don't have to wait a full year. But we still, um, Sam has reviewed our, uh, contract about, um. Uh, patrolmen spending one year with the City of Weston and he believes that we can beef that up and add some more teeth to that. Um, so that is, that is still something we're doing. We're still actively working to keep folks here a year. Um, it's just that our previous plan of creating that incentive out there hasn't been working for us. So I'm suggesting that we try something different. Uh, the other thing then is, it's, it's through the middle of the board. It's about a thirty-five hundred dollar increase across the board. Um, and then on the upper end of the board, it's a little bit a larger increase for the chief and deputy chief. Uh, one of the things that we've been running into, because the chief and deputy chief are salaried. Um, and the other employees are hourly.
Hmm.
Uh, the other two officers we have have told me candidly that they would not entertain ever wanting to be the chief of police in Weston because it would immediately be a pay cut for them. Um, so I don't think it was intentional, but we've created a system that doesn't, uh, encourage wanting to work to be. Um. At that level of production that you, you would even have the opportunity to become chief. Um, so this begins to separate captain from chief a little bit more. Um, I think. I think there's about an additional three thousand dollar separation there. But I think that we're going to need to continue to grow that separation with future increases as well. So, that's everything I have. And I do think that this is needed. And it was brought up at the last council meeting, and I do think it's time. It's unfortunate, but we're just in an arms race with every other municipality. And it's actually going to get worse soon because there is, there is a twelve-week training that a municipal officer can go to to become a state trooper. That's going to get replaced soon with a two-week training. The length of that training was what kept officers from doing that. So, again, we just, we're in a
Agreed against the statement.
Right. We're just, we're in an arms race, and we're trying to keep up. But it is public safety, so it's important that we do try to keep up. So, I recommend approval of it.
Okay, consideration of new police pay schedule. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Consideration of street sweeper repair at sixteen thousand nine hundred.
I'll let Mike speak to this a little bit. I'll just give you a quick overview that the street sweeper is having some issues. There's a cheaper repair that we could attempt. I'll let him speak to that. But if that fails, then we won't have the street sweeper ready in time for the Christmas parade and things. And he has a verbal quote in this amount to get a repair done that is sure to replace more. So Mike, would you like to say more?
So Mike, do you need a motion to approve up to seventeen thousand dollars for a street sweeper repair? And that way, it would You have what? So how much do you need? Twenty?
We'll go there. We'll start there, but I think a little bit less.
Okay. Do we have a motion to repair the street sweeper up to twenty thousand dollars? We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Herb Curtis. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Consideration of event application from Lewis County CEO S's for the month of October.
So this is in page ninety-one of your packet. There was an email that went out earlier from Councilwoman, and I think it's good reason to pause. We do have a lot of Halloween stuff going on right now in October. This is our biggest month for tourism in Weston, and we have our downtown right now appropriated to match that. And she suggested that we add the condition that they limit this to Center Avenue and that they work with the courthouse to get things done down there.
And post office.
And the post office.
What's it for?
The pink webands up everywhere.
Yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, because Main Street's decorated. Nothing on Court Street, so. And, the purpose of decorating Main Street is to get visitors from our largest tourist attraction that is during their busiest month across the bridge.
Center's not decorated.
Center's not decorated.
No, word for word.
Yeah.
I'm just, that's why, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, so that was, I was requesting that, that they have it. I just know that the purple bows showed up much better on that street than the others.
Yeah.
So you can add a condition or restriction there. So I'm recommending that you approve it with the condition that it be limited to, is it Center Avenue? Am I right?
Mm-hmm, yes, please. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll approve of the conditions.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of DPL shaft construction.
It's on page ninety-two. That's the only
Total cost of sixty-four hundred dollars.
Yes.
Cost of material for thirty-six hundred, cost of labor twenty-eight hundred, total cost of job sixty-four hundred. Entertain a motion from council? We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Consideration of purchase of additional Verkata camera from opioid settlement fund.
Okay, so this quote came in late, so I put it in the back of the packet. It's way back on page one fifteen of your packet. So we're finally chucking the camera project off the list and getting that up. And I've been in communication with our, well, and there's another update to give you there, which is, I learned a lot about cameras in the past month. We, before we had Lynx putting up the cameras, Advantage Technologies, who we bought the cameras from, was putting them up. And at some point, we saw fit to transfer that over to Lynx and have Lynx do it instead. In the, somewhere in there, I think it was when Advantage was putting up the cameras, the license plate reader camera was mounted on the front of the street department, pointed to the street department mailbox, where there are no license plates. So I've got them coming out to move the license plate reader. And it's going to be moved to the old G C Murphy building, pointed west, down West Second Street. We did, one of the cameras we got up was the camera on our spa, so that one is up. But so they're going to put this up on the G C Murphy building. It's going to get moved. It's supposed to get moved this week. But then I've been in communication with our officers, and they would really like another one. I won't disclose which particular location they're most interested in because we don't yet have permission to put it there. But there's a feeling that we have, we have more than one major thoroughfare through town, and they feel like they need another one out there. So since, I think we're at the point that we can start building on to this camera system. You saw it was something like four thousand dollars. Normally, that is something that I could approve through general funds, but I'm asking you to do this through a special fund, which is the opioid settlement fund. In the past, you know, we got about five thousand dollars in the opioid settlement fund. We had talked about wanting to use this money for prevention. And our main avenue to do prevention was the after-school program, the AmeriQ after-school program. So when that got cut, I went to Dr. Stewart and said, we have a little bit of money, and we want to do a little bit of prevention. Would you send us a request at some point if you have something? I still haven't received anything from her. But the opioid settlement money can be used for basically prevention, intervention, treatment, or recovery. Intervention covers a pretty broad range of police stuff. And this appears to be a qualified use, and other towns have used the money to do this. So I think this is a good use to finally use those funds that have been sitting out there for a while. So I'm recommending to go ahead and, and it's, there's actually two cameras. One of them is called the context camera. It's just a normal camera that catches everything. And then the other one is the actual LPR that just zooms in on license plate and catches those. So there's actually two cameras in that quote that you see the total for on page one seventeen. But I'm recommending purchasing that through the opioid settlement money.
What was that, what was that price one more time, Jen?
I'm going to have to get to page one seventeen.
Here, take this.
That's the total.
Uh, one fifteen, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but the total's forty-one hundred.
Don't get me confused.
Four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars eighty-seven cents.
Yeah. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Consideration of Kim Lee Horn contract for environmental review and thirty percent design.
I'm probably going to recommend that you table this one until we can get Kim Lee Horn in here to have a discussion with us. I've been pressuring them for quite some time to get something back to us, and they finally did get this back to us. And I think I've, and you saw, I forwarded out to you as soon as I got it, like four P M. on Friday. I think we've got some questions about it. I do have answers to some questions. So I will explain that the thirty percent design, what this means is basically they're looking at implementing a phase of the master plan. Master plan is not yet split out into enumerated phases, but the budget is going to cause it to be split into phases. So what they're looking to do the design for is just phase one, which is basically just up top. It doesn't involve any work down in the river at all. And so that's why they're anticipating no need from FEMA to weigh in on this front thirty percent. But they know that probably by the time they get to the next thirty percent or the last forty percent, that it is going to involve FEMA and understanding how that impacts the floodway. But I think there's just other questions involved in this and what's going on that I think are worthwhile asking. And if we already know we're going to put a work session on the agenda this month, maybe it's worthwhile to invite Kim Lee Horn out and answer any more questions we might have.
Do I have a motion to table? Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Discussion of fencing projects.
This is on the agenda at the request of Councilwoman Gump.
I didn't do fencing on sidewalk, lady. I was a sidewalk lady, not
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood the request then. You didn't want to discuss fencing?
Sidewalk fix.
Yeah.
If you notice, if you're coming through the narrows, you can notice where the sidewalks dip, that it's got a bow in the middle.
The hoof is getting fixed. That part's getting fixed.
I'm talking about the fence.
I moved it in the agenda.
What? I thought you were talking about the sidewalk.
No, I said the hoof. That, Mike knows what I'm talking about. The sidewalk where the fence is currently being put is below the road level.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
That's, that's the problem.
That's the problem.
That's the only part. The rest of the sidewalk is all good. The hump in that first part where it's below the road is the issue.
Yeah.
And you have several kids walking home from school in the afternoons through there.
Yeah. And we are, so we stopped fencing so that we could finish, we could fix that hoof up first. I don't know that we have the sidewalk budget to fix everything that's below grade at this time. I mean, I think there's going to have to be a little bit of meat in the middle if we want to get the fence up. Just because we've been using coal severance as our means to fix sidewalks, and that would be a lot of sidewalk fix all at once. And so this is where I'm just, I've asked the public works department, fix that big hoof up first. Because that is what would keep, I'll say like a handicap person from being able to get through there.
Whatever.
The lower part also needs fixed. It also needs repaired. But at this point, it's not a mobility issue. So we've paused the fencing for that reason. But I do intend to keep the fencing going after we get that
No problem. I just think that sidewalk that's below, right there as you come up, where Water Company owns
Yeah.
to pretty much where the end of the fencing is now. You know, I just think that being below the road, it's kind of dangerous. Very easy for a car to swerve right over there. Because you have no curving through there at all.
Yeah. Depends, depends how many funds that is. Depends, depends how many funds that is. Yeah.
We did move side, we did move things that were at.
Yeah. I mean, at this point in the sidewalk program, spending any more than about $5,000 this year. It, the money's not there. And so if we're already looking at replacing that hoof up, then we probably can't. But what we, what we could do, if this is, if this is important, and I, I don't know what 50% is going to cost. I just know it's more than what we have in the budget right now. Um, but what we could do is, I mean, we still have room in that be a no tax budget to increase be a no tax revenues. Um, but I think at that point we're giving completely up on, on the thought of giving any kind of a be a no tax credit or a reduction this year. Um, but that's, that's the only place right now you're going to find tens of thousands of dollars if that's what you're looking for.
I don't care. I just, you know, at some point it's going to have to be fixed.
Yeah. Now, I think, I think one of the other challenges is, um. Are, are we prepared to repair sidewalks across all wards, evenly across wards? Um, and I don't mean that to pick on Sherry, like I don't want.
No, I know. I understand. I understand.
It's just we, we, we get those calls.
I know Stevens.
If we can find a way to make it work. Find a way to make it work, but I, I do think it's a little bit of a stress for our budget right now.
Maybe the D O H will take care of all of them.
I already asked.
Make some calls.
I did ask. Okay, thank you. Okay, are we done with that? We ready to move on?
Debbie.
Okay. Consideration of transferring city owned property to the L R A.
Uh, I originally had this on there as discussion and then I changed to consideration because I thought, by golly, I'll have something ready. And then I didn't have something that I thought should have left it at discussion.
Want that tabled?
Well, let me, let me throw it out there for you what it is first. We can have a little bit of discussion and then we could table it till next month. Um, actually Marty, why don't you take it away?
There's a property up in 705 Cliff Street. That borders pieces of property that's city owned. The lady, I thought I think she just truly thought should have that piece of property. She kept some trees on city properties. I would have been against that. And so I caught it and I said, you can't do that on city owned property. And she would like to purchase that little, that one little piece of property. And I told her, I said, if that's a consideration. Counsel would have to transfer that to the L R A, then the L R A can negotiate with you on a price whatever. But we insist on having the ability to use that property to access other city properties. Uh, let's tell the 27 agents on the end there on that hill. Somebody break my temper or something.
Yeah.
She has no problem allowing access through there.
Old sanitary board.
But she would like to.
She didn't know. Did I get, did I send that to you earlier? Well, I had requests for that. Or did I send it to you?
No, I just discovered.
No, I, Mike, did I send it to you and ask you about that? On Cliff? Yeah. They told me they had accidentally built that over there on that. Yeah, but they want, they want the, you know, they, they want to buy it, you know, instead of moving their building.
I'll move to transfer city owned property to the L R A.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Um, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of executives.
You're not under the business aid.
We got to get this done now.
What? Oh, no.
Yes.
Okay. I thought we were going to do go into executive session.
I know what you're doing, Sherry. Come on.
I know. Alrighty. Where was that? I was. Discussion and consideration of action regarding Councilman Curtis's. Ward for impending resignation and resulting vacancy. First off, I'd like to say, um, that it's certainly been a pleasure working with you and we've learned a lot as a team. Um, over the past few years and I appreciate your dedication. And your thoughtfulness, um, in which that you tackle the issues. And also, um, the teamwork that you.
Appreciate.
Despite. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks. I just. I don't know. I'm going to come in. My chair is not going to be all the way over there.
Add them to your chair. Whoever gets in.
I, I do think that you really added a lot to the council. Um. Especially with your, all your questions.
One more, one more question.
One more question.
Question. And, and they were always, you know, very pertinent to what was being discussed and. I think that we'll miss that and we'll miss gaining, um, the information from your questioning. Because Sherry and I do not know a lot about infrastructure. So we will definitely miss that and I, I don't know. I think it'll go to trial.
I don't lose that.
Steven.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate all you've done.
Well, uh, I won't cry. Uh, I do love her, but she's not that kind of guy. I do appreciate your, uh, your work here and, uh, taking me under your wing a little bit before I even started frankly and, uh. Kind of just seeing it through and I definitely appreciate the guidance and, uh. The example that you've led as a councilman.
Good to hear. Thank you.
You guys are next.
Guess you are. If anyone would like to say anything, I'm not going to single people out. Um, if you just want to congratulate her.
Would you like to cry, Joe?
I, I won't cry, but I'll say thank you for bringing the business mindset. Um, I think that's been something.
And HR.
You've brought, yeah, and, and, and the HR and personnel management. Um, I just really appreciate the wisdom that you brought to council.
Appreciate it. Thank you. There'll be more to come. Yeah.
I'll, I appreciate the way you're, you're always candid and honest.
Noah.
And you're always working out for your constituents. And, you know, regardless of what the personal thing may be, you always seem to, to take what they said to you to bear that back.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Guys appreciate it.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Okay.
On behalf of the street department, I would like to say the eyes over there are over on Michigan. It's a bitter, but I do know that. They did confide in me a lot and, uh, they, uh, they informed me, thanks for all working and saying frankly, man, I appreciate. All of you've done for me as when I joined the, the city and lead me in the direction of, um. Probably I didn't know much about the city, but I do now. I know more than I did. I don't know. I know more than I did the day one. So, but I thank you.
I appreciate it.
Your challenge has each of us to be better people.
Yep. Appreciate you guys. Thank you. And I'd just like to say on behalf of myself, I appreciate the opportunity and, uh. I've learned a lot from each one of you as well, even if I don't show it or I'm still talking when I'm asking questions, uh, I'm learning. I guess everybody has their own way of learning and asking questions and, uh, there's no two personalities the same, so. Uh, I hope I've never come off of be, as being a bad person, but. Usually when I get in a business mindset, I got a ton of vision to, to accomplish whatever, to reach the goals I'm setting out for, so. I've learned a lot and, um, I've had a lot of experiences in each department, really. Uh, a lot of work and a lot of thought and. Lot going on. So yep, I appreciate each and every one of you as well. Thank you.
We need a photo op with all of the team. And let's see if, yes. And Kim, come up with your husband.
Read the newspapers.
See if Adam will take a picture, take the picture for you with your phone.
Oh, my hair.
Let me get a place.
Was I supposed to?
And then we might have to go up top here. Yep, you are there. There you go. I'd say we probably will. So we can, uh, get everybody in.
Can't hide behind the screen.
Yeah, I got right here.
Okay. Got it? That's yours.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that.
Well, I'm going to be a stickler real quick, um, and say, I think we, we need a couple of things for the minutes. Um, Councilman, do I understand that it's your intention to resign effective the end of this meeting or?
Yes.
Yeah. Would, would counsel like to formally acknowledge Herb's resignation effective the end of this meeting?
I'll acknowledge it.
So that would be a first. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Uh, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That was difficult.
You, at this time, you also have the opportunity on the agenda to take further action related to that vacancy if you're ready to. You don't have to. The mayor did ask me to shake my finger at you and say, uh, please don't let the vacancy go more than a month or two.
Okay.
I have not, uh, how about you, you ready? I don't have a vote tonight anymore.
So the special session. Okay, we have a motion to table. Do we have a second? Uh, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I apologize. I did bring that up earlier, but. Leaving my position, I do recommend Adam Sims, and he actually came tonight and. I spoke to, I think the mayor and councilman White already. As far as, uh. Hoping that they would. Have a decision by now and then, um. I think, uh, Councilwoman Gumps reached out by text and Councilman Roberts is still waiting to speak to him, but. So I recommend it.
Thank you.
Can we put that on the? Next, the special session agenda, please.
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll move forward. All right, at this time, do I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters?
Yeah. Is he allowed to go in? I think he should be allowed at least to go into special session because meeting's not.
We still want your opinion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries at 7:45.
Bye, Noah.